The August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting in Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, note the presence of all three commissioners, and I'm going to ask Mr. Scott France to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am going to begin this morning by addressing our plans to remove the former county prison on East Erie Street. Anyone who drives down East Erie Street can see and appreciate the architecture of the prison. In fact, the building was designed by the same architect Napoleon Lebrun, who is responsible for designing the historic Montgomery County courthouse. I and all of us in county leadership are sensitive to the fact that the prison building dates to the eighteen-fifties and represents unique architecture from that era. But there are major differences between the prison and the courthouse and the justification for preserving one and not the other. This is why we are investing over ninety million dollars in preserving and restoring the courthouse and bringing systems to twenty-first century standards. At least twenty million dollars of that figure specifically focuses on the preservation of historic elements. Since its inception, our broader Montgomery County Justice Center project has included as a fundamental requirement historic preservation of the courthouse and the monuments installed in Hancock Square Park. One of the two architectural firms selected through a public bidding process for this project, John Milner Architects of Chad's Ford's, are experts in historic preservation. They have extensive experience spanning local and national resources. They are guided by, in their words, quote, "respect for the designers, artisans, and craftsmen who created this country's agricultural history." During the design process, these firms conducted extensive analysis of both interior and exterior courthouse elements to determine precise paint colors, full documentation of the historic drawing record, and laboratory analysis of stone, wood, and glass to capture accurate preservation of historic character. The project involves preserving all historic murals inside courtrooms and carefully moving, preserving, and reinstalling all monuments. All these plans were developed after county leadership and their architects met with stakeholders, including the W.S. Hancock Society, the Narsetown Historical Society, and the County Courts Historic Committee. I present all that detail about the courthouse to demonstrate how seriously we take our responsibility and how we value historic preservation. By contrast to the courthouse, the prison is a crumbling, environmentally hazardous structure that represents the history of incarceration that should not be the face of Montgomery County or Narsetown, its county seat. I have heard the prison referred to as a castle. It is not. It was not. It was a house of incarceration. The accelerating deterioration of the building manifested itself in the partial collapse of the roof in twenty nineteen. That led us to engage the engineering firm of Gannett Fleming. They visually inspected the building's interior and exterior and helped us determine that the building had no future viability. A major difference is that we are talking about a prison, not our courthouse, not the Academy of Music, and not the Basilica of St. Peters and Paul. All of these buildings were designed by the same architect, but three of the buildings are also contributing to the fabric of our society in meaningful and positive ways. We are not prepared to ask taxpayers to spend millions of dollars to preserve a monument to a system of incarceration that disproportionately imprison people of color. Taking down this structure will not change the inequities in our criminal justice system, but we also refuse to invest in celebrating that legacy. If the county were to propose to build a prison in the center of Narsetown today, we would be rightfully criticized and the idea would be rejected. I believe Narsetown's past was better and bigger than a prison in the center of town, and I believe Narsetown's future is brighter and bigger than restoring an old prison in the center of town. Montgomery County prioritizes our resources on creating spaces and opportunities for our citizens to enjoy and thrive. Our focus should be on using our resources to keep our community safe and keeping people out of our current jail rather than preserving the old one. We are excited at the prospect of working with Narsetown to repurpose the prison property and the neighboring Erie Street parking lot to further spur the borough's revitalization. There is a better and higher purpose to the land that will improve and save lives. The county has engaged Kimmel Bogratt Architecture to work with Narsetown and the county to plan for the development options that would benefit the entire community. Until then, the building's large footprint will be turned into a well-maintained green space. Narsetown is on the rise, and we intend to continue to support those efforts. Our record shows that we respect and endorse historic preservation, and we also want to continue to contribute to Narsetown's future. Next, I'd like to acknowledge that today, August seventeenth, is National Nonprofit Day. At Montgomery County, we're lucky to work with some incredible nonprofits that go above and beyond for our local community. Our nonprofit partners play a critical role in providing food, health care, housing, childcare, mental health resources, elder care, and more for our most underserved and vulnerable Montgomery County residents. Providing everything from home-delivered meals for seniors to behavioral health treatment, support for children, and those with developmental disabilities, nonprofits are one of our community lifelines. So we're grateful that they share our mission-driven purpose, and I want to thank them all for the work that they do. Next, we have a special recognition to thank and say goodbye to all the summer interns who have been working here with the county over the past few months. We want to bring them in. I guess people have gone back to school. You guys are the last ones. I want to welcome you, all the county interns who have joined us today. Thank you for being here. Overall, the county hosted twenty-three interns this summer, ranging from high school to graduate school. Their majors and interests included mathematics, IT, political science, law, criminal justice, and urban planning, just to name a few. I want to thank all the county departments who hosted interns this summer, and I believe they're going to be listed on the screen. And we're grateful for all of our county staff who provided tours of our facilities and made sure that our interns received a truly immersive experience here in Montgomery County. During their time with us, our interns had the opportunity to work on various projects, such as setting up computer equipment, trial preparations, assisting with DEI training sessions, autopsies, and more. So once again, I want to thank you all for being here today. We hope you enjoyed your time working with the county, and we hope that if your career brings you back to government, you will consider a public service. Others have heard me say this before. I actually started as a county intern in the commissioner's office. I'm not going to say what year it was. Many of you weren't born then, but it was during college I was a poli sci major at Temple. Do we have any Temple Al here? There we go. Go Temple. So I've kind of come full circle here and ended up sitting in the commissioner's chair, so I hope you all will consider that as well. We have certificates for you in the room, and I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Wynder and Commissioner Gale if they want to say anything.
Any Nittany Lions? Any Penn Staters?
Not many. My brother is-
Your brother is? That's awesome.
My brother is the Burge Campus.
That's great.
I just like to take it through Special Olympics there.
Awesome. Awesome. I'm a Nittany-
I'm ready for a year that was canceled this year because of smoke.
Okay.
Summer games.
Okay, great. Well, just thank you for spending your summer with us. I know how important-
Yeah, I hope to be able to come full-time soon.
Yeah, well, we've got plenty of opportunities, so we would love to have you. So I hope it was a great experience for you all. I wish I was still in college and reliving my youth, but, you know, seize these opportunities, seize these moments, and hopefully, when you graduate, you'll consider Montgomery County as a permanent home. So thanks for being here this summer.
I'd also like to thank all our summer interns for your hard work over the summer and wish you well in your fall semesters and as you move forward in your educational and career path. And I hope you found your time here at Montgomery County a valuable experience and learned a lot. So thank you for your service.
All right. Thank you all. All right, finally, I am pleased to announce this month's Way to Go Monco winners. The Way to Go Monco program is open to all county employees, encouraging them to nominate their colleagues for going above and beyond. To date, more than two hundred county employees have submitted nominations, singing the praises of their coworkers. Each month, we draw employees from the list of nominations, and each wins one hundred and fifty dollars in recognition of their work. So here then are this month's winners. Danielle Higgins, a ranger supervisor for our parks, trails, and historic sites. Her nomination says, "Dani is always gone above and beyond on the job, between hand-cutting trees down on the trail to transporting people who can't make it back to their vehicles. She is always the first willing to help out and lend a hand, and many patrons ask about her when she's not in." Next, we have Katie Henderson, voter registration manager for our voter services team. Her nomination says Katie is the type of person who you can show a specific chore, and she observes the order of how it is to be completed the first time shown. She also comes with more efficient ways of doing a task that gets the job done more accurately and more quickly. Our third winner is Veronica Washington, who is from our adult probation and parole department. Veronica has brought her unique skill set of being bilingual in English and Spanish, which has proven to be a tremendous help for both the probation department and DUI services. She is a great addition and asset to the department. Next is Francis Bar Two Sis, hiring manager, community relations specialist for our Office of Children and Youth. Her nomination reincites joining the department in August twenty-twenty-two. Fran has proven himself to be indispensable. He works very hard, is extremely dependable, and is willing to take on any assignment and assist his coworkers in any way possible. And finally, our fifth winner this month is Kathy Cipris, senior analyst developer for our ITS team. Kathy is so deserving of recognition, she is an integral part of the IT department, she is always seeking ways to improve processes, and you can always count on her positive spirit no matter what is thrown her way. So I want to congratulate all of our Way to Go Monco winners for August, and I will hand it over to Commissioner Wynder.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. Good morning, everyone. Hope everybody's well. I can't believe it's summer's almost over, so hopefully you enjoy what's left of it. So I'd like to start by acknowledging Women's Equality Day, which is Saturday, August twenty-sixth. Celebrating Women's Equality Day is a tribute to generations of women who fought for their rights, my rights. The day commemorates their years of hard work before Congress passed the Nineteenth Amendment in nineteen twenty, giving women the right to vote, the same voice in our democracy as men have had since founding our nation. My hundred-and-three-year-old grandmother, who is still living today, was alive to see the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment, which prohibits discrimination based on sex. But as a woman of color who was raised in the segregated South, my grandmother still lacked many opportunities that were not available to her white peers. I tell this story because it's an important reminder that we are still constantly pushing for equality. It was not automatically granted in nineteen twenty, and many women, people of color, people that identify with the LGBTQ plus community, or people from other marginalized communities, are still fighting for their rights. Here in Montgomery County, we are committed to ensuring that our programs and services further those efforts. We recognize that gender equality is not just a concept, it's a principle that drives our actions. When women thrive, communities flourish. The county continues to support women in our communities, including through our work done by our recovery office, which is committed to ensuring that a portion of the county's one hundred and sixty-one million in pandemic recovery funds will support local women-owned small businesses. As an employer, the county supports equality efforts by offering paid maternity leave for women and their partners, and we are updating our compensation study this year to ensure pay equity across county departments as a part of our larger diversity equity and inclusion goals led by Donna Richmond. As one of the few women to serve on the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners and the first woman of color, I am proud of the progress we have made, and I am committed to continuing to make positive changes for women in our community. That concludes my remarks.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Ms. Gale?
Yeah, I would just like to take a moment to address the constituents that have concerns related to the historic prison here in Narsetown and its demolition. I want you to be aware that I oppose the contract to demolish that prison mainly due to the cost. It was nearly a million dollars in costs to demolish that prison and due to the fact that there's been a series, a long series, of property tax increases in Montgomery County, and in my opinion, mainly driven to the cost of the capital side of our budget. We need to be responsible with every decision we make when it comes to capital expenses, and it's hard to justify a million dollars for demolition costs. In my experience, that's on the high side, and whether you're in favor of restoring the building or maintaining or keeping the building or demolishing the building, we have to be fiscally responsible in the process, and in my opinion, it was too expensive. So a lot of people have reached out and asked, and I want you to know that I was a no vote, I voted two to one, and that's all the comments I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Gale. We will now move on to public comment.
I have an objection.
I'm sorry, we're going to start with David McMahon.
You're going to start with what?
David McMahon.
No, I have an objection. I'm not, this is not my public comment. This is my objection. Last month, you instituted a new minute limit on us and on anybody who speaks, and what you used as your basis for doing that was the Sunshine Law and a case that was a Dr. Sklaroff versus the Abington School Board, which coincidentally Ray and Josh were on that school board at the time.
Excuse me, one second. This is an objection. You're making public comments. Just state your objection, and you can sit down. Otherwise, we're counting your time towards your public comment.
Well, you can't do that because, see, this is what it says about objection, and there's no time limit on it.
You can proceed.
Learn the law. Thank you. So what I'm trying to say is, you're using something that all this one thing said, the one where Sklaroff was suing the Abington School Board, all that came down to was, yes, you can set a time limit. Well, that's what the Sunshine Law says. But the Sunshine Law says more. It says it should be a reasonable amount of time for the situation, and this is not a reasonable amount of time, three minutes. And also, you are not allowed to tell us what we can and cannot talk about, and that's what you're trying to do. I already gave a copy to Pauline Calder, a couple of months ago, the Pensbury suit, the parents sued the Pensbury School Board, and what they came out with was that even if you don't like what the constituent or what the person is saying, what the commenter is saying, you have to listen to it. And you don't actively listen. All you guys do is look at the clock, wait for it to run down to the minutes that you want us to talk, or you don't want us to talk anyway, and then you shut us up. Enough is enough, and we should go back to unlimited, and I would be happy with five minutes with a leeway, but you cut people off mid-sentence. You don't even have the courtesy to allow them to finish their thought. This is egregious, and it really needs to stop unless you want to find yourselves in court. I'm happy to do that, too. That's the end of my objection. Thank you.
I have a second objection to Pauline Brascio, and a unique objection that has not been already stated under Section seven-ten of the Sunshine Act. Name for the record is Giuseppe Crane Monticelli, C-R-A-N-E-Y hyphen M-O-N-T-I-C-E-L-L-I, Springfield Township in Conshohocken Borough, Springfield Primary. My objection for the record under Section seven-ten of the Sunshine Act will be that whenever we are up here and run out of time, we're allowed to ask for more minutes. It's part of the case law Ms. Brascio has just read in Skyloof, the Abington School District, sorry if I've mispronounced that, and is up to the board to make an immediate vote and for no debate to occur whether that person gets their requested amount of time extra. That's my objection on the record, and I would like it also noted for the record that my minutes that are currently being used over there, two minutes and seven, cannot be used on this objection, otherwise I would violate the Sunshine Act. That's my objection for the record. I do intend to be back up here for my general public comment.
Thank you, sir.
Now we'll turn to David McMahon.
Hi, my name's David McMahon. I'm a Norsetown resident. I live on Halls Avenue. I am approaching this topic of the saving the Erie Street Jail as someone who is interested in decarceration and prison abolition. It may not be obvious on its face why you would want to preserve a prison as part of that process. I think we still live under the system of justice based on retribution and punishment that is represented by that jail. I think that building is more honest in its intentions than the new building. I think it's a unique opportunity to use that old jail as a site of transformation. I think it doesn't need to preserve, be preserved as a historical object. It could serve as a place of adaptive reuse and community-based support, and I think to build a new transformative justice model on the bones of the old site of the previous model is actually a unique opportunity and one that should be seriously considered and thought through. I don't think anything is stood or gained by pretending it didn't exist or rendering it invisible. Thank you.
Next is Olivia Brady.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm coming to you to express my extreme disappointment in your decision to demolish the Lebrun Castle. I call it a castle because it ceased to be a prison a long time ago. I understand that some people's feelings that a prison has no value and that spending public dollars to provide an acceptable adaptive reuse to this magnificent example of mid-nineteenth-century architecture makes no sense. Shamefully, the U.S. has the highest incarceration rate in the world, and there's no doubt that those incarcerated are disproportionately people of color. All of this has given prisons a negative and uncomfortable history. Were this building a recent working prison, there would be no, there would be no, there would be probably a good reason for removing this stigma for the town. However, that is not the case here. This structure has an architectural and cultural importance despite its past. Several other municipalities have taken such significant structures and given them new life. Bucks County converted their county prison into a high-end art museum. Philadelphia's renowned eastern penitentiary has become a destination which has brought a high level of economic benefits for the Fair Hill section of the city. And in Boston, the former Suffolk County Jail, which was an architectural landmark to begin with, was reimagined into a luxury hotel. Even around the world, prison buildings have given new positive lease on life. Broad Street Prison in Lagos, Nigeria, was converted into a low-cost community space. A colonial prison in England was rehabilitated into a leisure and arts center. And a prison in Poland was made into a high-priced hotel. The possibilities are endless. I urge you to reconsider this decision. Use the money allocated to the removal of the prison to stabilize the original portion so that a developer can come in and do their magic and adapt it to a positive, tax-paying, readaptive use. Take the negative, turn it into a positive, which would end up making a contributing member to the community. I think that's a better use of our taxpayer dollars than the demolition of a historic landmark. Thank you.
Next is Dr. Kenneth Whelan.
Good morning. It's Dr. Ken Whelan from Lansville. And I'd just like to address as to what would be the response of emergency personnel in Montgomery County to toxic chemical spills from train derailments. I am coming here after being frustrated to responses I received from state and federal representatives as well as emergency personnel. This is pertinent to me since I live in a town in which many freight trains carrying toxic chemicals transverse. In contacting my local officials, both state and federal, as well as emergency personals, they tell me they really don't know what's being carried on these trains and when they're coming through the town. Let me just give a little background. As you all know, on February third, fifty cars with five cars carrying vinyl chloride of the Norfolk Southern Railroad derailed in East Palestine, Ohio, and is near the Pennsylvania border. In June, the National Transportation Safety Board stated that this train twice needed repairs the day before the derailment, and on the derailment, the day of the derailment, a fire was seen twenty-six miles before the derailment, and the fire caused overheating of the wheel bearings, which then caused the derailment. And this is not a rare event. There is three to four derailments every day over the last thirty years, and over five thousand accidents have involved hazardous materials. In twenty-twenty-two alone, there were three hundred and thirty toxic chemical spills in which six people were injured. Three days after the derailment, there was this decision to burn the vinyl chloride. They called it a contained burn, but it wasn't, and the burn was pushed by the Norfolk Southern Railroad since it was the fastest way to clear the accident area. As an aside, the vice president, Paul Thomas, of the company called Oxy Vinyl, who owned the vinyl chloride, stated that the vinyl chloride was stabilized and not likely to explode. This information then was passed on to the emergency response team. As to who made the final decision to burn, fingers are pointing everywhere, and finally, they've come to point to the volunteer fire chief of East Palestine, who only had like thirteen minutes to decide whether to burn and not to burn, and he has said he was never informed that the vinyl chloride was stabilized. And burning is not the only response to vinyl chloride spill. A few years ago, there was a derailment of twenty thousand gallons of vinyl chloride across from the Philadelphia Airport in which a burn was not conducted. So as I stated, I was concerned that a local derailment of vinyl chloride would result in a burn due to the influence of the railroads. I contacted my local state and federal officials as well as the emergency personnel to see what protocols are in place, and I got no response. My mayor stated that the train derailment would never occur in our area because of the train. My state rec stated to contact the Montgomery County Director of Public Safety, to whom I wrote three emails and followed up with phone calls, and I never received a response until two days after I set up this meeting. Talked to you guys.
Excuse me, sir. Your public time is up. I would like to give my remaining three minutes to that gentleman.
You cannot do that, sir.
Why not? Mr. Leland?
Your time is up, sir.
Leland, is that correct?
Whelan, yes.
Whelan, sorry. If you give us your contact information, you can give it to Ms. Washington. We will make sure that someone from our Department of Public Safety contacts you this week.
Can I just say I had four questions to be answered, and which I never respond?
We can't answer.
See, this time is too short.
We can't answer the questions.
I only have like one more paragraph to talk.
We can't answer the questions.
This is, you've been shut off. This is not good.
Make sure that someone gets in contact with you. I know. I think I'm going to hear it.
Next is Pauline Brascio.
Good morning, Pauline Brascio, Townents and Township. I want to talk about the Justice Center. In nineteen thirty, March seventeenth of nineteen thirty, the building of the Empire State Building was started. They completed it less than thirteen months later, on April eleventh of nineteen thirty-one. So that is, like I said, less than thirteen months. The cost at the time was forty million dollars. In today's money, it would be five hundred and ninety-five million dollars. A hundred and two floors is the Empire State Building. They got it done in less than thirteen months. This building is four or five, still never got a definitive answer if it's four or five floors. It started out at two hundred and sixty million and very quickly went up to five hundred million, and Lord only knows how much it's really going to go up to. It's twenty months since it started in December of twenty twenty-one, and, you know, and we have even more advanced building equipment than they did, you know, nearly a hundred years ago. So this really screams that there's a lot of kickbacks going. I'd like to know how much money is Shapiro getting or Couche. I don't know if you guys are going to get any of it, but it's ridiculous that all this money is being spent for a building, and the judges don't even, nobody's even being incarcerated. You don't want to talk about a jail. All I ever read, every time somebody is arrested, they get a plea deal, and they get out on for less, way less years, and then they're under probation. And the article says, oh, so they'll be under court supervision for the next seventeen years or whatever, but they're only spending seven years in jail. And we all know probation, parole officers, whomever they are, are not really in control of these prisoners who get out early. There should be no early release. There should be no parole, especially for homicide. I personally know an individual who bludgeoned his grandfather to death, served eleven years, and is now out. You know, it makes, no anger management, no, I don't even know why he's even out. So the waste for this building is phenomenal, and the fact- And the fact that people are not actually going to jail and being punished for their crimes is a travesty. So you have, oh, you want to build all these courtrooms. For what? What do the judges do? Okay? They get bribed, they get threatened, and they just do whatever the prisoner wants, basically. Very rarely have I read that a person who committed a crime is actually punished for the crime in full. So I don't understand why this building is being built, why it's taking so long, why it's costing so much money, and I can't get any answers either.
Thank you.
So...
Your time is up.
No, actually, it's not. I still have a few more seconds. I used my phone.
No. Your time is up. Would you like Mr. Robbins to assist you to your seat?
I don't need assistance, Ray. But you know what? You don't have to be rude either. As I said, you're not supposed to be interrupting people, and that's all you do. Yeah, I'm leaving.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is Giuseppe Crini Monticelli.
Excuse me for my mobility impairments. Giuseppe Crini Monticelli. Concha Hocken, Springfield, Springfield primary. I can't go through the agenda. I'd love to. Pre-typed statement, just like how August of 2019 was when I first came here. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Ranking Member Ms. Weiner and Commissioner Gail. Excuse me. The First Amendment of the United States of America Federal Constitution has always been something of controversial value here at Commissioner meetings, biweekly or otherwise, the first Thursday and the third Thursday of every month, except for July and August, where it's only one time a month. The First Amendment has five principles to it. One of those principles is the freedom to peacefully redress grievances towards the government, which is a government founded by our founding fathers, to be a government run by the people, for the people, for we, the people. That's what that means. Meaning, we, the people, employ and elect you, Commissioners, to employ people to carry out the functions of this great county of Montgomery. Chapter 7 of the Sunshine Act, as I feel, this new three-minute time limit is not reasonable at all. And as you can tell with that senior, he couldn't even comment anymore. And Joe, you could have objected, no debate could have happened, and you would go to a vote to see if he could be allowed my minutes. I was willing to give up for him. We're at one minute now. 2019, all over again. You need reeducation. I pay attention. Terminal v. Chicago, 337, United States, 1, 1949 is the year. Accordingly, a function of freedom of speech under our system of government is to invite dispute and may indeed best serve its high purpose when it induces a condition of unrest, creates dissatisfaction with conditions as they are, or even stores people to anger. Speech is often provocative and challenging and may strike at prejudices and preconceptions and have a profound unsettling effect as it presses for acceptance of an idea. That is why freedom of speech, though not absolute, Chaplinsky v. New Hampshire, Supra 315, United States, 571 to 572...
Thank you, sir.
Is nevertheless protected against censorship or punishment unless shown likely to produce a clear and serious substantial evil. Sorry about that, Robbie.
It's okay. Thanks, bud.
No worries, Matt.
No worries, I have time to me, sir. So I'm going to step down.
Next is Peggy Delasat. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going to read portions of the letter that I sent to each one of the Commissioners because I know my time is limited. I moved to Norristown back in 1970 as a young girl. I migrated from the Fairmount area of Philadelphia where I grew up close to the Parkway. I thought Norristown would be a great place to start my career. My career spanned for over 40 years, and I know a lot of the people in the community. We grew up together. We loved each other. They love that building, and they don't want to destroy it.
I love that building, too.
Just to bring to your attention, there was the magnificent Norris Theater with an Art Deco facade that dated the 1920s era. The inside had a grand stairway that led to the balcony, amongst other historic buildings, the Valley Forge Hotel, and et cetera. All of these historic properties became victims of the wrecking ball, and the people that had no vision for Montgomery County's seat, and it was so very tragic. While other towns thrived and used their historic properties to help with the revitalization, we tore ours down. We tore them down, and we turned them into McDonald's cold-brick buildings with no character. The destruction of our historical collection of eye-catching buildings took away the continuity. So now at the top of the hill in Norristown is a castle. The Napoleon LeBron Gothic 1854 Old Montgomery County Prison, this beautiful castle has been neglected since the closing. Once a prison, is now a piece of history that is tied to the courthouse, designed by the famed Napoleon LeBron, who designed the cathedral, yes, sir, St. Augustine's Church, the Academy of Music, just to name a few. Can you imagine tearing down any one of these historic buildings in Philadelphia to put up a parking lot or a McDonald's? Can you imagine? Can you even imagine burning a Picasso? I am appealing to you to please have an open mind and consider preserving, yes, the castle on the hill that crowns our skyline. Make it a destination, a drawing card, a tour center. Teach our youth about crime and where it leads. We can't put it under the carpet. I applaud all the progress that has been made in town. I noted that it has taken a lot of hard work, planning by the borough and the planning board. I've waited and watched for 50 years, yeah, 50 years I've been in this town, to see it come to fruition. So please do not destroy. Have an open heart. The last piece of historical beauty, yes, the queen on the hill. Demolishing it would be a loss for the entire county as well as the state and unfair to the Norristown community. I thank you for your time, and I pray that each and every one of you have an open mind about this. I thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Gail John Bresnahan.
Good morning, everyone. First of all, I want to thank you for preserving the courthouse. It's a beautiful building. No one would ever want to demolish the courthouse. I moved to Norristown in September 1983, almost 40 years ago, and bought a townhouse here in town, which I still live in. I was drawn to Norristown because of its rich history and architecture and its proximity to Philadelphia, where I worked for over 40 years. Almost every day, I have walked by the wonderful buildings in Norristown, including the courthouse, St. John's Episcopal Church and Courtyard, the First Presbyterian Church, and the prison. These buildings are the iconic buildings of Norristown. When you think of Norristown, you think of these buildings. When you look at the mural located at 201 DeKalb Street, the first buildings at the top of the mural are these iconic buildings. You have the courthouse, the prison, St. John's Episcopal Church, and First Presbyterian Church. Matthew Bush, the Philadelphia mural designer and artist from the Philadelphia Mural Arts Program, said, "The purpose of a mural is to reflect the beauty of a place." On July 26, 2023, I attended the Montgomery County Planning Smart Lunchtime Webinar, Historic Preservation Opportunities. One of the members of that webinar was Michael Narkovich. I hope I pronounce his name correctly. He is a community planning assistant manager at Montgomery, at the Montgomery County Planning Commission, who enjoys promoting historic preservation and has a particular interest in using regulatory tools to preserve and enhance neighborhood design and sense of place. Also attended was Megan McNish from the Eastern Region Community Preservation Coordinator for the Pennsylvania State Historic Preservation Office. The main theme of that webinar was that historic preservation can benefit community character, economic development, quality of life, environmental sustainability, housing affordability, and more. I sincerely ask you to reconsider your decision on the prison.
Thank you, sir.
At the very least, please give us more time in this community...
Sir.
...to discuss the important issues. Demolition should always be a last resort. I thank you very much for your time.
Next is William Collins.
Thank you, Commissioners. William Collins. My firm is Simone Collins. We're on Lafayette Street. If you were standing at the Trail Center and looking across Lafayette, we have the big picture window with the flowers in front. We renovated that building with a county loan in 2008 and '09. And the purpose of that program was to bring reinvestment into the urban areas in Montgomery County. We weren't the only ones. Theater Horizon did the same thing, and they adaptively reused an industrial building, the Bell Telephone Building. Ours was a print shop. You look at the NGO sector, look what Akamo is doing with an old church. They're adaptively reusing the church for a community center. We work with them, the students on the Adelante program, teaching them about our profession, which is landscape architecture. When we moved in, there was an effort spearheaded by Siler and Drury, who's right up DeKalb from us on Mount Airy, for the Arts Hill. That was an inkling of a good idea, but it was centered around the heritage of Norristown. What I'd like to appeal to you is that the careful consideration that you've given to historic preservation at the courthouse should be equivalent for the prison, but it is not. And so I'd like to suggest that there is an avenue where we can take a business approach to this, because this is what we do. We help our clients figure out how to reuse their infrastructure, and we do it all over Pennsylvania, and so does Siler and Drury. There are funds out there to do the feasibility to decide very clearly whether there is an economic benefit to saving a portion or all of that building, and how that could be coupled with private development on the open space. People are doing this all the time. The formula is there. The funds are there without spending county funds or Norristown funds. And what we're asking is that you give us the chance to work with the borough and work with the county to investigate this, to do the due diligence that's really everyone deserves, and then make the decision. So stay of execution, whatever you want to call it, let's put a pause on this and do that work together. Bring in the community, bring in the experts that we need to figure out if there's a business decision here that makes sense to trade on our heritage. That's what the Historic Preservation Act of 1966 was designed for, to capitalize on our resources. So I thank you for your consideration, and we're available 119 East Lafayette. Thank you.
Next is Doug Siler.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Doug Siler. I'm an architect with a firm here in Norristown, live in Woodpein Township, and I'm here today to speak about the concept of delaying the demolition of the prison and performing appropriate studies to investigate whether it can be a contributing component to our town. Mr. Lawrence, I appreciate the care with which you made your public comments. I just this morning sent each of you a letter, which I put equal care into, and I hope that you'll each read it and look at the points I raise. It has three parts to it. The first is establishing the background and history, perhaps what you might call my credentials for feeling I'm appropriate to speak on behalf of this prison. The second is to speculate a bit on how we got here, which seems to, observer, to be a bit opaque. And secondly, to make suggestions on how to go forward. One of the comments you made, I'd like to just read briefly from that letter. "In over 22 years of advocating for this building at forums and through petitioning, I have never heard a comment to the effect that this is a negative association or a negative connotation because it is a prison. To the contrary, when it was built, it was a point of civic pride. It's worth stating that negative associations are opportunities for a community to educate their citizens and visitors through signage and other means to turn a negative element and perception into a positive one." Second, I commend that you are doing a study for this site using an architectural firm. I assumed it was a public RFP for that. I'd like to think that you could confirm that at some point, but it should be done before the building is demolished. This is the type of study that should involve preservationists such as Milner. It should also involve a land use economist so that they can comment on, is there benefit to be had from reusing this building? I commend you on the Milner study at the courthouse and their work. Did they do a similar analysis of the prison? Tearing this down and saying, well, there's plenty of Lebrun buildings, is like saying, we got plenty of Frank Lloyd Wright buildings. Who needs another one? I'd like to just comment about cost for a second. I think Mr. Gail raises a good point. Philadelphia City Hall stands today because in the '70s or '60s, I believe, it was deemed too expensive to demolish, and they said, oh, well, we're going to have to deal with this thing. And I think this is an equally solid building. It's a very expensive cost, and I urge you instead to take the million dollars that you're spending and use it to clean it, which you have to do anyway, and prepare it like any normal developer would to allow a private-public partnership to go forward and reuse this beautiful building. Thank you very much.
Next is David Morgan.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm David Morgan from Ambler, and I'm concerned about the fact that two years ago, at the August meeting when many people were away, the Commissioners voted to spend $232 million on the Justice Center project, as the headline is in the reporter of that meeting. Paper came out in early September with that headline. And so that amount is quite vast because we have the next-door county of Bucks County finishing their project for $86 million. And $232 is spent in that one meeting two years ago. Then that's not finished. We've got a long way to go. As is mentioned in the May 11th reporter article about topping off the new courthouse, and in it, Commissioner Lawrence, you say, well, we have a long way to go until this project is fully complete. We still have a lot of progress to celebrate. Still, taxpayers have to pay for it. And that $232 was spent, $232 million was spent in a budget year of $50 million for the county campus plan. And who knows what else was spent that year? So I can see then, from what I've tallied, our spending to date is double this $232, about $455 million. And then there is projected spending in the capital plan. There's a $455 to date. I've shown this before. And then we have future years. $455 remains there, but then the future year is added $207 million more from... from our estimating. So it becomes up to $662 million. So therefore, $415 million should not be used anymore as a figure for the county campus plan. Should be 600 plus, maybe 10 times what was spent at Bucks County to finish their plan. No furnishings are there yet. So I'm concerned that we don't see that ever happen again in Commissioner meetings. That cost control really, as Commissioner Gale has mentioned from very early times, really considered highly because our taxes went up 5%. Then it went up 8% the next year, then 8% more, 21%. And we've a long way to go. Then maybe have 30% more tax increases in the face in the next few years. So do we want to continue that course with the way that the majority has been voting? Spare no expense. So I'm really concerned about that. Also, I was concerned by this report of the governor canceling real alternatives funding, $7 million. So $7 million compared to these amounts is hardly anything. And these are really lives, people who are living. It helps, like our Monaco Mama's program, successful birth outcomes for the black community and other minorities especially have been lagging. So great program to continue. Why would our governor do this? I suggest, Commissioner Lawrence, since you know him well, that you relay that concern because Monaco Mama's tradition is to have promotion of healthy outcomes for birth. And also to Dr. Arkush, that you know her well, that that could be communicated to save lives.
Thank you for your time.
Now we'll move to the Zoom comment. And first is...
I have an objection.
Now, with all the commenters that just came up, my name is Pauline Brachio from Tompkins Township. You did exactly what I said you're not supposed to be doing. You're not even listening.
Ma'am, you cannot repeat the same objection. Your time is up.
Your time is up. You hear a person finishing up, and you just can't keep your mouth shut.
Thank you.
Robbie, you need to stop coming up here and interrupting people.
Please.
Have some...
Take a seat, please.
Use your brain.
Yes.
Use your ears.
Have a seat, please. Thank you.
Jeanne White.
Jeanne White from Montgomery Township. We, the people of Monco, want to start a working meeting with the Commissioners and the Board of Elections to discuss how the primary and general elections that we pay for can be returned back to the individual municipalities, 426 precincts, including in-person ballots, mail-in ballots, absentee ballots, overseas armed force ballots, et cetera. The return of all counting to each polling location, as has been done prior to 2020. Specifically, we, the people, want to go back to hand-counting paper ballots, including absentee ballots at all 426 Monco precincts within 62 municipalities. The bottom line is that we, the people, do not trust the machines, the Sharpies, or the security surrounding the mail-in ballots going to a county central location. In addition, in-person ballots are transported at the end of night in unsupervised Joe's cars, in some cases to a satellite location, and then moved again from the satellite location to Washington Street Warehouse. Then specific bags within the Joe bag are removed without law enforcement or county sheriffs to One Montgomery Plaza for provisional overseas armed forces created not scan ballots review. Our banks use security firms to move money from one satellite location to the central bank location. However, our most precious asset, our votes, are carried by Joe's in their personal vehicles to satellite locations in some instances and then moved to the Washington Street Warehouse without county law enforcement sheriffs that our ballots demand. Drop boxes use county employees, not county law enforcement or sheriffs for pickups. There are only 12 of them. This process is unacceptable to we, the people. In the 2022 general election, I was a designated candidate representative to observe provisional ballots being moved from the sixth floor of One Montgomery Plaza to the eighth floor Commissioners' Conference Room to accommodate the larger number of attorneys and observers with one elderly gentleman by himself wheeling those ballots on a wheeled dolly onto the elevator by himself. I was appalled at the lack of security. If you do not want to take measures to secure our votes, we want the job returned to we, the people before the 2023 general election. The people at the polls do stellar work. Republicans and Democrats all working together. The Joe minority and minority inspectors and poll workers feel very confident that they can actually accurately count all the precinct ballots, including mail-ins, on Election Day and get closed at 9:30. When can we arrange a meeting with the Commissioners and Board of Elections to discuss security? And Ms. Winder, could you please remove your Winder-kosh sign from Will...
Happy to do that. Just tell me where they are.
Next is Marlene Laska.
Yes, good morning. Yes, this is continuation, basically, of Jeanne's comment. Marlene Laska, Upper Providence Township. We, the people, want to start a conversation about how we return to return to Montgomery County elections, back to the precincts, including the return of all counting to each polling location, as has been done forever. Specifically, we, the people, want to go back to hand-counting paper ballots, including mail-ins at the precinct. One precinct worker stated that in 2018, it became very obvious that we no longer had control of our election outcomes. Also, one judge of election, often called Joe's, says she is responsible for the results of her precinct that has around 3,000 registered voters. But with mail-in ballot is going directly to the county, she can only account for about 40% of the mail-ins that have been applied for in her precinct, not a comfortable percentage. Plus, she could not ensure any chain of custody for her mail-ins. The bottom line is that we, that the people, don't trust the machines or the Sharpies or the mail-in ballots going to a county central location. The people at the polls do stellar work. Republicans and Democrats all work together. The Joe's majority and minority inspectors and poll workers feel very confident that they can accurately count all their precinct ballots, including mail-ins, on Election Day and get close to the same 9:30 PM final results timeframe. The desire to return to hand-counting paper ballots, including mail-ins at the precincts, have been expressed before, both at this meeting and also to the Board of Election meetings with briefs of the concepts to the BOE staff. It is now time for the people of Montgomery County to diligently start focusing on changing our election backs to the way we, the people, believe they need to be. Monco can approve doing such since such is a county-level decision. We look forward to working with Monco to implement a return to hand-counting paper ballots at the precincts minimally in time for the 2024 general election, if not sooner. Note that this comment is a heads-up only. We will be in touch shortly to hopefully form a working group to work out the details. Thank you very much.
Lastly, we have Laura Layman.
Let me, just before Ms. Layman's, unless Ms. Layman's going to talk about the elections, too. Do we know? I just want to address the last two speakers. Act 77 required that absentee ballots and mail-in ballots be counted at the county. So that's state law. Neither the Board of Commissioners nor the Board of Elections has the authority to return them to the precincts. So I would encourage you to advocate with the General Assembly for that. But that's not something that the county has control over. We administer our elections under state law. Okay, we can...
Go ahead, Laura.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good. Starting my timer. So first of all, I also want to lodge an objection. I will do it at the end of my three minutes. So when my three minutes is up, please tell me that's the time for my objection. And I do agree with the earlier objectors about the public comments. That's unbelievable that we are in such violation of sunshine law. Also, you are disrespecting people when half of my screen, my Zoom screen, is taken up by a big box that says "public comment." And the speaker is so tiny, I can barely see him. Please fix that. It's such a simple fix, okay? And I think we all should be appalled at the comments and especially Mr. Morgan's careful analysis of the Justice Center figures, especially when we are literally not knowing what to do with the homeless people that we have. All of that needs to be taken... People need to be taken care of first. If you have that many hundreds of millions of dollars, there is no reason for people to be homeless with no resources adequate to help them. And along those lines, the two major things that I want to talk about, I sent you an article today that very aptly describes how the incredible overbuilding in township after township that's being driven from the County Planning Commission, who sends planners to every one of our townships. And in this planning, they are creating TODs everywhere in really what I will call a nefarious way because there is no way that the people understand what they're doing. They're creating comprehensive plans, as you are doing there. And in these plans, you're creating a vision with dense development around the train stations. That vision is being used under case law and state law for text and map amendments to be approved almost automatically, which removes our spot zoning protections and takes our zoning away from us. So we absolutely cannot allow that to continue. It is the overbuilding, and the article that I sent explains that we are now getting to the point where we have way too many luxury apartments, and it's increasing homelessness. The second thing is we have a very serious health matter in Abington Township that I've tried to report many times.
Excuse me, Ms. Layman, your time is up.
Let me just finish the sentence, okay? So to finish the sentence, Kaylee Silver and Cory Springer and others are on an email chain, but we want you to be included and engaged. These are people who are in danger. Okay, and now I'd like to start my objection. The objection is to having speaking rights curtailed in the manner that you are curtailing them. So thank you for letting me finish my sentence. That was one way that you have been curtailing many people's speaking rights. They use half the sentence to start a thought, and you don't let them finish it. So they've lost the earlier time, too. And the second thing is that, as Pauline said, your goal here to follow the law is to make the speaking rights reasonable. That's the goal. And three minutes is not reasonable for many issues. And when somebody tried to share their three minutes tonight, you wouldn't allow it. So please change that. Please respect us. And please change the speaking rights. You represent 800,000 people or more, and you can't do that in 25 minutes.
Thank you for your objection.
All right, we are now going to move on to the approval of the minutes of the July 20th, 2023 meeting of the Board of Commissioners. I will make a motion to approve the July 20th, 2023 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Minutes are approved. Resolutions. Mr. France.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today, we have an action before you as an extension of an existing memorandum of understanding, or MOU, with four counties and the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. Those four counties are Montgomery, Bucks, Chester, and Delaware for the purpose of exploring strategies for long-term electricity purchasing and renewable energy purchasing. Our goals in this effort are to achieve greater cost savings across the region, improve flexibility and control of electricity purchasing, and increase the use of renewable energy sources. This MOU was originally instated in August of 2021 with those four counties and the DVRPC as mentioned, and expired, actually, in June, although the efforts have continued as a steering committee. Just a quick update on what they've been doing. The Energy Partnership, now referred to as the Southeastern Pennsylvania Energy Partnership, or SEP, is recommending a managed portfolio strategy of energy procurement and currently drafting another MOU that will be more specific in governing how that is implemented over the coming years and energies obtained. There is no additional costs with the extension of this MOU. The consultant that was on board since 2021 or after the start of that MOU is still on board, and that cost is already covered. And so this will just extend it to 2025 and formally allow for the continued meeting and operations of that committee. And that's what I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. France. Let's get a motion on the table. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into an amended memorandum of understanding with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission to explore strategies for long-term electricity purchasing and renewable energy purchasing. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Mr. France, I know Mr. Lusher couldn't be here today, but I know that he worked very hard on this with the other counties and Dean Dortone, our CFO as well. So I want to thank them. Thank you for your leadership on this. I plan to vote yes. Do we have any other comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Ms. Calder, approval of amendments to the county's procurement policy.
Thank you. The county's current procurement policy was drafted in 2012. From the operational experience of having worked with the policy for more than a decade, in addition to feedback received from those who do business with the county, we have determined that changes to the policy are necessary to bring it up to date, clarify provisions, and make sure the policy is in line with best practices. Some of the sections that have been revised include those addressing state statutory requirements, responsible contractor requirements, and the county's commitment to contracting with local, small, and diverse businesses. The resolution before you requests that you approve the amended procurement policy that is attached.
I'll make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby adopt the attached amendment procurement policy to guide the county's future procurement decisions. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any board comment?
Yes, this procurement policy includes language referring to the responsible contract ordinance, which I disagree with. When this policy came up before with amendments, I opposed, and I will oppose again today because I support a more robust competition process when it comes to the county bid process.
Thank you, Commissioner Gale. Yes. Hearing no other comments, we'll move on to a vote. Commissioner Winder, are you in favor?
Yeah.
I'm in favor. Motion passes two to one. Commissioner Gale voting no. Ms. Calder, approval of authorized county signatories.
Thank you. The next resolution before you requests approval to designate county officials and employees as authorized signatories for the county. State statute gives the county commissioners authority to designate holders of county positions as authorized representatives of the county of Montgomery, and best them with the authority to act as signatories for all lawful and properly authorized business, including those matters which have been approved by the county commissioners by duly adopted resolutions. The authorized signatories that are being approved by this resolution are the three commissioners, the chief operating officer, the two deputy chief operating officers, and the chief financial officer.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that in accordance with the authority conferred by law, the individuals holding the below-listed titles or titles, offices, or positions within the county of Montgomery are designated as authorized representatives of the county of Montgomery and are considered the proper county officials for the purposes of executing all manner of documents and performing all actions in connection with those items which have been duly authorized by the county commissioners via resolution, ordinance, or other legally permissible means. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are not voting on item number four today. We'll vote on that on a later time, and we will move on to personnel now. Ms. Haylen.
Good morning. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's Department Personnel List. It is a four-page document dated Wednesday, August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, with a timestamp of four thirty P.M. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
I will make a motion to approve the August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three Personnel Presentation as Given by Chief Human Resources Officer Catherine Haylen, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Advertisements of bids and RFPs. Did you, did you change your seats today, Mr. O'Malley? I didn't think you were.
Yes, I was. Yes, one bid on behalf of Public Safety for Radiation Portal Monitor. The successful responder will provide six radiation portal monitors and a vehicle conversion kit to replace aging equipment. Monitors are passive radiation detection devices used for the screening of illicit sources. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. All of our bids and RFPs are available on the county's purchasing website at www.montcopa.org/purchasing.
I'll make a motion to approve the preceding request for the advertisement of a bid as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Awards of contract.
One contract award assets and infrastructure dredging services for Green Lane Park, Flyway Excavating Incorporated of Mountjoy, PA, three hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Contract provides for maintenance dredging of the Deep Creek Lake at Green Lane Park to remove accumulated sediment. Specification six five zero nine was viewed by thirty-two providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to lowest responsible bidder. Two contract award assets and infrastructure construction reimbursement for Church Road Bridge in Upper Marion Township, Upper Marion Transportation Authority of King of Prussia, PA, thirty-three thousand eight hundred and one dollars and forty-five cents. Contract provides for previously agreed upon reimbursement costs to the Upper Marion Transportation Authority for the replacement of Church Road Bridge in Upper Marion Township. Three contract award assets and infrastructure condition assessment for Camp Rainbow, IEI Group Limited of Philadelphia, PA, forty-five thousand dollars. Contract provides for a comprehensive and detailed building site inventory, inspection, and condition assessment of the Camp Rainbow property in Schwanxville. Multiple firms solicited through the project enabling list process. Four contract award Health and Human Services Flu Vaccine, Zenyatta Pasteur Incorporated of Swiftwater, PA, ninety-six thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. Contract allows for the purchase of influenza vaccine for the twenty-three, twenty-four flu season. Vaccine available through a Minnesota multi-state contracting alliance for pharmacy contract. Five contract award Health and Human Services Mobile Mental Health Crisis Services Access Services Incorporated of Fort Washington, PA, one million twelve thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars. Contract provides for mobile mental health crisis services, which will provide coordinated crisis response inclusive of prevention, intervention, and linkage referral in order to support individuals and families. RFP twenty-three, twenty-three, thirty-four was viewed by thirty providers with one response received. Contract is awarded to the only responding provider who has met all the qualifications of the RFP. Contract is for a period of one year before optional annual renewal terms. Six contract award Health and Human Services COVID Lab Testing Provider, Genetic Testing Laboratory LLC of Irvine, California, fifty thousand dollars. Contract provides for a COVID lab testing provider for specimen collection, courier service from Montgomery County facilities to the selected lab, laboratory PCR testing, analysis, results reporting, and insurance billing services. RFP twenty-three, thirty-six was viewed by thirty-one providers with seven responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated responder. Contract is for a period of nine months with two optional one-year renewal terms. Seven contract award Health and Human Services Community Health Education Provider, Aklamo of Norristown, PA, eighty thousand dollars. Contract provides for community health outreach and education in Montgomery County to address ongoing community health needs related to the prevention and control of communicable diseases. RFP twenty-three, forty-one was viewed by nineteen providers with four responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated responder. Contract is for a period of one year with two optional annual renewal terms. Eight contract award Health and Human Services Lead Outreach and Education Provider, Aklamo of Norristown, PA, sixty-two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Contract provides for a lead outreach and education provider to augment the Montgomery County Lead and Healthy Homes program to prevent childhood lead poisoning and to promote lead-safe healthy housing. RFP twenty-three, forty-five was viewed by thirty-one providers with one response received. Contract is awarded to the only responding provider who has met all the qualifications of the RFP. Contract is for a period of eighteen months with renewals available for up to three years. Nine contract award Health and Human Services Lead Abatement Training Provider, Alpha Training International LLC of Douglas Town, New York, sixty-four thousand dollars. Contract provides for an expansion of Montgomery County's Lead and Healthy Homes program to prevent childhood lead poisoning and to promote lead-safe healthy housing. RFP twenty-three, forty-seven was viewed by six providers with one response received. Contract is awarded to the only responding provider who has met all the qualifications of the RFP. Contract is for a four-month period beginning September one, twenty-twenty-three, with three optional annual renewal terms. Ten contract award assets and infrastructure tree removal services, multiple vendors. Contract provides for as-needed tree removal services for various county-owned properties. RFP twenty-three, forty-nine was viewed by twenty-six firms with five responding to Schedule Two. Contracts are awarded to all responding providers to Schedule Two who have met the qualifications of the RFP. Pricing is per respondents on-call service fee sheet. Contract is for a period of one year before optional annual renewals. The awarded responders are Corbo Landscaping Incorporated of Norristown, PA, J.C. Lockey Enterprises LLC of Green Lane, PA, Jimmy's Tree and Landscape Contractors LLC of Philadelphia, PA, Joseph McElveen Tree and Lawn Services of Feasterville, PA, Staub Tree Services of Lansdale, PA. Eleven contract award Information and Technology Solutions Software, PC Connection Sales Corporations of Merrimack, New Hampshire, seventy-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-one cents. Contract provides for help desk software used for service request ticketing. Contract is for a one-year period beginning September one, twenty-twenty-three. Software is available through a Pennsylvania education purchasing program for microcomputers cooperative contract. Twelve contract award Information and Technology Solutions Software, Civic and North American Incorporated of Englewood, Ohio, ninety-six thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. Contract provides for maintenance and support for the master data warehouse for Health and Human Services for a one-year period. Services are proprietary. Thirteen contract award Public Safety, nine-one-one Phone Center Furniture, Miller Atwork LLC of High Point, North Carolina, twenty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Contract provides for specialty chairs for the nine-one-one phone center operations. Furniture is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Fourteen contract award purchasing forklift Eastern Lift Truck Company Incorporated of Maple Shade, New Jersey, thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Contract provides for a forklift for use for the county supply room. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Fifteen contract award sheriff, support agreement for tasers, Axon Enterprise Incorporated of Phoenix, Arizona, forty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. Contract provides for a two-year support and maintenance agreement for the existing department tasers. Equipment is proprietary. Sixteen contract award Treasurer's Office Advertising, Twenty-First Century Media Newspapers of Denver, Colorado, thirty-five thousand seven dollars and thirty-one cents. Contract provides for payment of Montgomery County tax sale advertisements. Advertisements for public notice were placed in The Times Herald and The Mercury. Seventeen contract amendment Assets and Infrastructure Engineering, Michael Baker International of Fort Washington, PA, thirteen thousand six hundred and one dollars and eight cents. Original contract provided for an engineering firm to perform the required engineering, environmental permitting, and construction consultation for the replacement of County Bridge two-six-nine, Eastern Road over Sandy Run in Abington Township. Amendment provides for the unanticipated completion of the GP five permit needed to relocate the Pico gas main. Eighteen contract amendment Information and Technology Solutions Document Service, Scan Tech Incorporated of Willow Grove, PA, forty-six thousand seventy-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. Original contract provided for the scanning, microfilming, and secure destruction of five hundred and two boxes of Domestic Relations Office files. Amendment provides for image count overages of the original estimated amount. Nineteen contract amendment Assets and Infrastructure and Planning Commission Management Services JBC Associates Incorporated of King of Prussia, PA, three hundred and sixty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Original contract provided for Construction Management Services Ridge Pike Improvement Project Section D Crescent Avenue to Northwestern Avenue located in Springfield and Whitmarsh Townships to the Philadelphia City Line. Amendment provides for additional project management hours required for scheduling delays due to utility company redesigns and supply chain delays. There are thirteen renewals and twelve amendments for Health and Human Services. Those providers and services are listed at the end of this agenda and in the back of this room.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the proceeding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Awards of contract Assets and Infrastructure.
One contract amendment Construction of new Archives Building Oliver Fire Protection and Security of King of Prussia, PA, four hundred and eighty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Original contract provided for fire prevention construction services for the new Archives Building on the Emergency Operating Center campus. Amendment provides for the furnishing and installation of a fire suppression system determined to be required due to insufficient water flow at the site.
I'll make a motion to approve the proceeding award of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley, to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment?
Yes, I oppose the original contract and will remain consistent by opposing this contract amendment as well due to high capital costs.
Thank you. Commissioner Winder? Are you in favor?
Yes.
I am in favor. Motion passes two to one. Commissioner Gale voting no. Awards of contract for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force.
Contract award software licensing for law enforcement records management, CGWG LLC of Vernon Hills, Illinois, one hundred and sixty-one thousand six hundred dollars. Contract provides for enterprise licenses for Montgomery County's law enforcement records management system. Software is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Two contract renewal Cybersecurity Network Services Computing Technologies LLC of Lehigh Valley, PA, two hundred and three thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Contract provides for cybersecurity and managed network security services for the Montgomery County Department of Public Safety. This is the first of four available optional annual renewal terms. Three contract award drone management program DroneSense Incorporated of Austin, Texas, thirty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars. Contract provides for a one-year support and service agreement for the drone management platform in use by the Montgomery County Department of Public Safety. The platform will manage and interact with responding drones owned and operated by Montgomery County Municipal Law Enforcement and Emergency Management Agencies. Four contract award software licenses, Yochi Incorporated of New Haven, Connecticut, twenty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars. Contract provides for a subscription to the Virtual Emergency Operations Center on the Internet software for Chester County. Software is proprietary. Contract term is for a one-year term beginning in August thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast PA Regional Task Force as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Do we have any closing commissioner comments? Hearing nine, I'll announce the next meeting of the Board of Commissioners will be September seventh, and I will make a motion to adjourn the August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Okay. Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned, and we will convene Salary Board. I believe the controller is online.
Good morning, I'm here. I can't start my video for some reason, but I'm here.
Okay, good morning. Do we have any public comment on Salary Board?
Yes, I do. I would like to make a comment. I've decided I would like to. Can I proceed the?
You can come to the microphone.
Mr. Chairman, Giuseppe Carini-Mattiselli, Contra Hockenborough in Springfield, Springfield Primary. For Salary Board final list, I would like to comment about the wonderful work that our District Attorney's Office does, and the amount of work that they're having to do right now because of the COVID backlog and criminal and civil court cases. These people work tirelessly and endlessly, night and day, and should be recognized for their efforts, especially people that are part of the law enforcement, District Attorney Office, and even child and youth, as their job finds to be the most hardest. I do, however, would like to comment on some stuff here. I would like to comment on the resignation of Court Clerk Sasha Reed. Sasha Reed provided very superb services as being a public servant to this county, and I believe that she should be recognized more than just here. And maybe you can get all of these resignees in whenever you do these things. Maybe you can bring them all in, just like the internship, what you did with the summer interns. Whenever someone resigns, maybe you can bring them in front of the board here, whoever can make it that day, because nine-one might not be able to make it, you know, that type of thing. I would really like to see that happen because school districts like Springfield Township and I know North Penn School District, and I even believe Colonial School District, they all do that. They all bring up the retirees. So, Mr. Chairman, I would ask for that and respectfully yield the rest of my time on the floor to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Haylen.
Good morning, members of the Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a six-page document dated Wednesday, August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, with a timestamp of four thirty P.M. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three Salary Board Presentation as given by Chief Human Resources Officer Catherine Haylen, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
I'll second that.
You moved.
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner Winder.
I'll second.
Seconded by Controller Sanchez. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Okay. Motion passes. And we have a retiree acknowledgement? Do we have a retiree acknowledgement? We do not have a retiree acknowledgement? All right, we're going to move on then. Is there a motion to adjourn the August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
I'll second that, please.
Controller Sanchez, is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes?